And Lionel, just a last minute reminder if you can enable the recording.
Ma'am Chair, all yours.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please call a roll?
Freeholder. Graham. Absent, I have to get used to saying Commissioner. Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Ricardo. Absent. Commissioner Pamares.
Here.
Commissioner Sebo.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Richardson, absent. Commissioner, President Gill, absent. And Commissioner and Chair, Committee Chair Cooper.
Here.
Roll call is completed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I had before me a certification from the clerk that this meeting is in line with the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting is a continuation from our committee meeting last week where we had a number of banks appear before us. And today, we have two banks with us. The first bank up, Madam Clerk, is.
Connect One.
Connect One. And the purpose of this meeting is for the banks that the County of Essex that we do business with to meet and appear before us to discuss the CRA report on their lending, small business activities, and any mortgage programs or relief that they may have for Essex County businesses constituents. So at this time, I'm going to get a floor to Connect One. Please start by giving us the overview, a highlight of the things that you want and highlight of your CRA survey response that you sent in, and then we'll follow it up with questions and answers from the, from my fellow freeholders. So thank you. Please introduce yourself.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Mark Cardone. I'm a First Vice President, or First Senior Vice President, excuse me, with Connect One Bank. I head up our non-for-profit lending group. I've got a business development team, and I have a treasury services slash cash management team under my purview. Joining me today is Michelle Bell, Senior Vice President and Head of our Residential Mortgage Lending Group. The bank does not have a formal presentation around its public file, so I could either address any questions or read off our responses to the survey that you provide us with. So if you share your preference, I will speak accordingly. You're on mute, ma'am?
Sorry, hit the mute button. Our preference is for you to give us an overview. We don't necessarily want you to read the report verbatim, but you can pick, you know, sections that you like to highlight, and then we'll have a series of questions.
Sure. Okay. So on our most recent report, the bank has a satisfactory rating. The, there are three tests that comprise a CRA exam rating, a lending test, an investment test, and a service test. We scored a high satisfactory on the lending test, a high satisfactory on our investment test, and a low satisfactory on our service test. We made 24 loans in Essex County in 2019. The percentage of those loans in LMI tracks was 30%, slightly over. Let's see. We made nine commercial loans in 2019 in the county totaling $12.3 million. We made, as far as our grant effort, we made 15 donations in the county in 2019 totaling $32,585. Let's see. We do advertise the LMI tracks for, to homeowners. What else is worthy? We, foreclosure activity is not, is a public CRA file, so I can't speak about that. We have one branch in Essex County. It's on Chestnut Street in Newark. That branch is ADA compliance. We have a minority staffing policy that was shared with Deborah Marvel earlier today. And unfortunately, the gentleman that is ill, his name is Chris LaCotta. He's a Senior Vice President. He's a commercial lending team leader that focuses on Essex County, and he's based in our Newark office. That covers the majority of the survey, I believe, on everything.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Coroni. Thank you for presenting our information. So I have general, two general questions. It sounds like you've made 15 donations in the amount of about $32,000 or so, which would give the average award to be somewhere in the $2,000 range. Can you speak to what are the organizations that you have been assisting in the nonprofits? My second question is more about the foreclosure.
Sure.
And can you elaborate more on the foreclosure because we didn't get any figures?
On the second question, I am told that the foreclosure activity is not public. If you feel that's not accurate, I could certainly share your feedback, but Compliance did not complete that section on the survey. Again, because they're telling me it's not public, so I have no, nothing else to add. I don't unfortunately have all the donors, the nonprofits that we contributed to. I could certainly, I think I could find that out. I know that we do not have a foundation, so all of our giving is to our nonprofit, mostly non-for-profit clients. As far as those that might be that I'm aware of, one of my focuses is on independent slash private K through 12 schools in the metro New York area, and we do have a couple in the county, so we definitely gave to them last, every year for that matter. But I don't have, I don't have a list of all the entities that received contributions from us, unfortunately.
It wasn't, thank you. I appreciate that. I wasn't looking necessarily for a list of who they were, but the kind of nonprofits, you know, that you might be given, where they, you know, in the arts and education, senior-related.
Understood.
Things of that nature. That's what I was.
Certainly. Well, definitely education for sure, that much I know, because those I'm responsible for. I do not, I don't want to even render a guess, wouldn't be any good on the other 13 or 12. But are generally, it's around, either all that, you know, for 501(c)(3), so education, community services, some arts, not a ton. It's more for community service entities.
Okay. Well, thank you. As an arts guy, I'd employ you to, you know, maybe consider that.
I love the arts.
Thank you. Let me go back to the foreclosure for a minute. So I want to make you aware that with the exception of one other bank in the last meeting, you know, that we had, the first part of this, everyone else provided foreclosure information. And while I realize this is not your decision to share the information, I'd like for you, if you could, to send a message back to your compliance that all of the other partners, with the exception of one, have shared that information with you. And that is, I'm not going to speak for my board, but I'm sure my colleagues will chime in. But I am particularly interested in having that information made available to us and to be very transparent. That's something that's very important to this board. I think it's been a recurring theme, at least in the three years that I've been on. And we'd like, I personally would like for you to see if you can relay that, and if my fellow commissioners would like to join in that, I would encourage them to do so when it's time for their comments.
I only have one question for you, sir. From the questionnaire, it seems as if your focus is on residential foreclosures as opposed to business. Is that accurate statement or not?
I personally am interested in both, but I will leave to my colleagues each to weigh in if they choose to do so on what their interests. My number, I think I really share that. My number one priority is knowing the data in general, so I can understand, you know, the temperature of what's going on with the relationships between your customers, whether they be individual or whether they be commercial.
Okay, fair enough.
And I, and I can, and forgive me, I don't know what part of your portfolio is, you know, residential versus commercial.
Minutely. It's minute.
Okay.
Our focus is commercial business.
Okay. So we would, we would like, would be interested in, and I would be interested in that. And again, I defer to my colleagues if they want to weigh in on that. Thank you so much for presenting your information today. Thank you.
You're welcome. I will pass that message along and share anything I'm permitted to share. So I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioners, Commissioner Sebo, Commissioner Johnson, any questions?
Commissioner Sebo, you're, you're, you need to unmute.
I thought I was unmuted, sorry. I just wanted to state that I agree with Commissioner Pamares that we should receive that information. Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am. I will do my best.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo. Commissioner Johnson, any questions?
No, I just would like to say the information that Commissioner Pamares presented, because he presented basically what I really wanted to know.
Understood, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I too echo the same sentiments as Commissioner Pamares. Every other bank with the exception of one has appeared before us and have provided that information. We absolutely are looking for foreclosure rates, period. We'd also would like to know is what are the services that you provide, if any, to help small business owners or property owners on the mortgage side to avoid foreclosure? What are some of the services and activities that you provide?
I can speak to the commercial side. So because of the situation that we're in, i.e. COVID, we have, like many banks, offered deferments of payments on our commercial loans to businesses that have come to us, which have been fair amount, whether they be both principal and interest or simply just principal. So we have offered deferments ranging from 90 days to 270 days of those loan payments to allow these entities to help them survive from a cash flow perspective through the pandemic until their revenues get back to pre-COVID levels. And we may, we may end up understanding that program for all I know. Michelle, do you have any comments on deferments to residential borrowers that you're able or willing to share?
Yes, we offered the same to our residential borrowers. We mirrored what was the dictate for the agency guidelines for Fannie and Freddie, initially giving them 90 days. If after that time, they needed more time, it was evaluated to extend that timeframe.
So 90 days for mortgage side, residential mortgage side, and everything else after that was done on a case-by-case basis. And the business side was 90 days up to 270 days.
Correct.
Restructuring the loans in general, if people found that they needed more than a number of days that you just communicated?
I missed that first question. Restructuring loans, is that your question?
Yes, like some banks were offering people an opportunity to put missed payments at the back end of their mortgage was one opportunity. Refinancing it all the way around. Did you guys offer anything like that or just purely the number of days that you talked about for the payments?
On the business end, we are moving those deferred payments to the back end of the loans. Michelle, let you.
We've done the same. We gave them the option, if they were escrowed borrowers, we gave them the option to continue paying the escrow portion so that they would not be hit with a large increase at the time of analysis. But all payments went to the back end of their loan. If they were in a situation where refinance was going to help them, either lowering their rate, allowing them to still, you know, miss a couple of payments and then begin again. And for some borrowers, that was helpful for them. Others, it was just a straight deferment.
On the commercial end, I will, I imagine that there will be some loans where deferments are not sufficient, and we will in fact end up restructuring them.
Yes.
Okay. How long have you guys been providing banking services to Essex County?
Oh, boy.
We opened the, right, as soon as we opened our Newark office about, I think, six years ago, we recently enlarged the office dramatically. But we've, as soon as we went to Newark, it was, it was immediate, actually.
Okay.
My estimation is six years.
All right. What percentage of your business is mortgage products?
It's a very small percentage of the bank. The bank is a commercial lender by definition. Our portfolio is probably much less than 5% of the overall bank business.
Okay. All right. The other question is, why was your rating so low in the service area? And what can you do to improve that?
I can't speak to why it was low, unfortunately. You know, the public file just states the data, it is what it is. I don't have an answer for you on increasing that. I'm sorry for improving that.
Would you have an answer for us to how that area could?
Yeah, I don't think, from when I spoke with Compliance, I don't think they're interested in adding anything that's not public here. So there's no, the file does not contain any sort of efforts to lower, we wouldn't lower, of course, but the file doesn't give any more color than the actual ratings, so I don't believe anyone's interested in commenting on that.
How much money do we have with your bank, do you know?
I think it's about 75 million currently.
All right. Commissioners, if you guys don't have any other questions, before I let you go, I want to reiterate Commissioner Pamares' point about the need to find out what the foreclosure rates are for the commercial as well as the residential products. It's important for us to know that. We are interested certainly in doing businesses, doing business with banks that are mindful of our constituents and offer products and services to help ensure that our constituents are getting products that are friendly and conducive to them and their well-being. So we will certainly follow up with you to see if and when we will have that information made available to us. Thank you so much for appearing before us. Have a good evening. Stay safe.
Thank you so much, everybody. Be well. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mister, there we go. Madam Chair, the next bank up should be Sam Tander.
Sam Tander, okay.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, we, we have Mister, is it Biad?
Biad.
Biad, okay. And is there any other representative from your bank? Oh, I see. Yes.
They should be joining shortly, yes.
Madam Clerk, we have two individuals, Saleem and a Toby that are indicated here in our bank. Oh, yeah, and there's a Frank. We will let Frank into the room right now.
Thank you.
Ma'am Chair, everyone is in a room that's supposed to be in here.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sorry. All right. So can you please, we're asking everyone to give an overview of your team that you have with us today, and then you can follow that up with an overview of your survey response, highlighting the areas that you like for us to note, and then we will follow up with questions.
Okay. So I think that the board has met Toby Bala and Frank Casatino from our government banking area. Toby is actually from our Community Engagement, Community Partnerships Team. I think that I'm probably new to the, to the group. My name is Salem Biad. I'm the CRA Compliance Officer for SBNA, overseeing CRA performance and CRA involvement, Community Reinvestment Act. That is across the eight states served by the bank's branch network. As far as the, the survey is concerned, we wanted to make sure that we called out a couple items. I think during the last session, there were some questions around investment activity from our 2014 to 2016 CRA performance evaluation. We wanted to just clarify that unfortunately, just how the OCC or government regulator organizes their exam, that information was really primarily pertaining to Mercer County, which is the only area that's evaluated in New Jersey for the bank. The County of Essex is actually incorporated into the Newark, New Jersey Greater Metropolitan Area, which is part of the New York multi-state metropolitan area. So we can certainly provide some detail on there. We have some additional information we can provide relative to Essex County in a more recent period for 2019. And then lastly, I did want to highlight that we provided a copy of the bank's five-year inclusive communities plan, which does include an allocation for the state of New Jersey. The inclusive communities plan is our five-year commitment that spans from 2017 to 2021. And it essentially represents the bank's formal roadmap for our community development commitments over that five-year period. It's a $11 billion commitment for CRA-eligible mortgages, small business loans, community development loans, investments, and grants over that time. And essentially, we did, we have been making very strong progress on that commitment. Specifically in New Jersey, the commitment included over $750 million in low and moderate income loans, 335 million small, small business loans, 335 million in community development loans, $280 million in community development investments, and $9 million in grants, for a total of $1.7 billion. To date, we are well on track to meet those commitments. Overall, we are at about 80% to the goal, even though we are more than 80% through the, the, excuse me, we're more than 80% to the goal, even though we're not even quite yet 80% to the end of that period. So I'll pause there and see those questions. I'm not sure if the folks had a chance to review the inclusive communities plan or if there were specific questions that you had on our responses to the survey.
Thank you so much for giving us that response. Commissioners, any questions? I have a question. You, you noted that you do have one REO property. How is that property, is it currently occupied? Or if it's vacant, who is responsible for maintaining it?
Unfortunately, I don't have that information. We were working very quickly to get the, the REO detail. I can certainly confirm that for you and follow up with the committee afterwards. I believe that, that, sorry, go ahead.
I said, yes, please, would you, we would appreciate that information.
We can.
Okay. Talk about, please, your, you listed your foreclosure activities. What are some of the programs that you've provided to your customers?
So specifically this year, in response to the unprecedented pandemic and some of the hardship requests that we were receiving from our customers, we did a number of activities. One, obviously, we are complying with all aspects of the CARES Act. We are following the moratoriums that are through year-end 2020 that will likely be, and in many cases have already been extended into 2021. We have not had any negative credit reporting. Our essential structure for providing forbearances and hardship relief for customers has been a lift-and-shift concept. So we basically lifted the payments from the current period and placed them at the end of the loan with no fee or penalty for our customers, which has been pretty positively received from our customer base. Then also, we made enhancements to our interactive voice response system to allow customers to very quickly and efficiently get to support staff who can help them with their hardship requests. And obviously, we've added staff to accommodate the higher call volumes that we saw this year.
Thank you. Can you, how are, how do nonprofits find out about your community development loans and your grant-making activities?
So we actually have on the call today Toby Bala from our Community Partnerships Team. He's one of our local members there in Newark, in New Jersey, and in the New York area, who actively reaches out into the community. We have several established relationships with strong community partners in the area. One of our most prevalent partners is the New Jersey Citizen Action Group, who's part of our National Community Advisory Board, as well as our New Jersey Regional Community Advisory Board. Through that group, we also learn about other organizations, but primarily, we rely on our community partnerships managers to go out into the community and to understand about organizations that potentially might not necessarily be currently actively serving or working with, and how they, they might align with our business model and the programs that we offer as an institution.
Who is the person that's responsible, that's assigned to that engagement?
So that would be Toby Baba. He's the local representative that we have here in New Jersey. Toby, I don't know if you want to introduce yourself.
Yeah, Toby Baba. I did get to present the last time he invited, so thank you so much. So I cover the northern part of the state, the northern New Jersey, and then into central New Jersey.
And so, and talk a little bit about your community, community development loans, like what are some of the projects that you guys have funded?
So the, the community development loans, so my role is around the community engagement and assisting the bank in the volunteerism, building relationship with nonprofits, and then actually the more of the small business and the consumer lending. So we'll help do homeownership workshops, small business workshops, to do those types of loans. The actual investments that take place are through our community development finance team, which is slightly, slightly different. But in, on the small business and the homeownership side, it's mainly working with, you know, head counseling groups, whether it's like HomeCor, Montclair, La Casa, New Jersey Citizen Action. We work with small business groups like GNEC, Rising Tide Capital, where we engage and counsel small businesses and help them get access to our banking products and services.
Yeah, I could certainly speak to some of the investment activity that we had within Essex County in 2019. Between 2018 and 2019, the bank entered into four investments totaling $58 million, of which $26 million was dedicated to low and moderate income households or communities within the county. One example, one key example, was a $27 million investment, which provided equity into a $47 million rehabilitation of a 544-unit, 20-story apartment building in Newark. That, that property provides 526 units that are reserved, residential units that are reserved for individuals that earn up to 60% or less of the area median income. 350 of those units were under a 20-year half contract. So that's, that's one of the examples that we have here, but certainly we can provide more detail if you'd like.
All right. No, thank you. Commissioners, please feel free to jump in if you have any questions. All right. Oh, on the hat or, I'm sorry?
Salem, I know on the last call, there was some, there was a question about the ratings, and you mentioned that we are CRA rating, and you mentioned the New York statistical area. So could you share with the group what the, what our ratings are for, for the lending investment, for that, for that particular area of which Essex County is incorporated into which?
Thanks, reminder, Frank. So, yeah, so the, the bank's last evaluation that was completed by the OCC was for the 2014 to 2016 time period. During that period, we were rated as outstanding within the New York area, which includes Essex County, and that's across all three tests for lending, investments, and services. So really, what we have is a significant amount of homeownership financing in the area that helps carry our, our rating. We had that both in the lending side and the investment side. A lot of, a lot of lending, a lot of money going into essentially affordable housing. It's a mix of both dedicated housing for affordable, for individuals earning up to 60% or individuals that are earning up to 80%. So that might be dedicated, but then we also do a great deal of financing of naturally occurring affordable housing. So that, that's housing that is affordable to LMI people, but might not be covered by federal subsidies.
On behalf of one of our fellow commissioners, he would like to know the status or any programs that you offer in reference to financing, funding for veterans' housing. Do you guys do anything around that area?
So we do a lot of veterans financing through our community development finance team, but it's primarily in terms of equity. We don't have specialized lending programs. There will be some loans that come from that same team. But unfortunately, the bank does not have dedicated commercial loan programs for housing for veterans. But again, we do a significant amount of housing for seniors and veterans that's either preservation, rehabilitation, or creation of housing units through our community development finance team.
All right. Well, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to clarify. We, on our mortgage side, with our head partners, we, we have done a lot of loans for veterans that includes both our CRA portfolio loan, and we also are a VA lender, offering the VA mortgage product. So did want to clarify that part on the homeownership.
Thanks, Toby.
So as a follow-up, can you please provide us, please email it to Ms. Marvel, the contact information for your community development loan officer, as well as for the point of contact for your grant-making or your foundation? Who's the contact person for that area? Would be helpful. So I want to thank you so much for appearing before us and providing your information, providing a response. Thank you so much. You have a good evening, and you all stay safe, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, Bank of America will not be presenting today, so that concludes the banks that are scheduled for today's committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have any other business for the committee? No other business? Are there any comments from my fellow commissioners? All right, so at this time, I want to thank the administration and my Freeholder Commissioners for joining me this evening so that we could wrap up and finish our bank review program committee meetings for the year 2020. I think we will have to get together again in the new year to review the structure of our survey, as well as to go over some of the responses and some of the findings that we have. I think it's important for us to figure out a way how we stress to the banks, especially those banks that do business with us, the importance of receiving this information. I know Connect One, I was surprised that we have invested $75 million with this bank. I'm sure through a series of different accounts, and their level of investment, especially in the grant-making area, was less than $100,000, and I found that to be really surprising. So I would love for us to collectively put our heads together and see how we could potentially modify the survey so that we can receive the information that this board is interested in receiving, so that we can make sure that we do our jobs effectively. So if there's no other comments, questions, or concerns?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, can I just intervene one second? Just for the record, we have deposits with the bank of $75 million. We did not invest $75 million in the bank. We have deposits of $75 million. It's a slight, I just want to make it clear for the record. I understand what you meant, but just for the record.
Right, well, thank you, Mr. McInerney. Deposits, the deposits. You know, from my perspective, I use that word because when we make our deposits into a bank, they do the business that they do and, and yield the responses that they yield from interest and lending and all those other things. So I'll use the correct word to make sure everybody understands. The, we have $75 million deposited with Connect One Bank, I'm sure for a litany of a lot of different reasons, that I will ask of the administration exactly how does that $75 million break down. So thank you, Mr. McInerney. But again, I want to just remind and ask fellow Freeholders for us to collectively put our heads together and come up with a process to get the information, you know, that we're all seeking so that we can do our jobs effectively. So if there's no other questions, if everybody's hearts and minds are clear, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion.
I'll second.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Stay safe. All right, bye-bye.